...call meeting in order, never will happen.
Yes. Redspock.
Present.
Evans.
Present.
Canzaro. Schramm. Hutter.
Present.
Inojic.
Present.
Sichura. Walsh.
Present.
Kopa. Student rep Redspock. Buzo. Jeffrey.
Here.
Caputo.
Here.
Pivorado.
Here.
King.
Here.
Sullivan.
You.
Parsons.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Montse.
Here.
Carroll. Franceski.
Here.
And Nanji. Present.
Thank you. We will be going into executive session tonight after this meeting for a brief executive session regarding labor issue. We're going to start tonight with our students. Our recognition of our two students. Mr. Pivorado?
All right, great. We started meeting this couple of months ago recognizing some of our outstanding seniors and I just want to say this has been a really enjoyable experience. And I get to sit down and I get to solicit from the teachers, the nominations, and it's really exciting to see the names that come in and what teachers are saying about our students. So it's really nice and I'm privileged to be able to recognize those students. So first I want to recognize a young lady from the senior class. The teacher that nominated her said she's always willing to help, whether it be with teachers or other students. She has a positive attitude toward her classwork and hasn't given in to senior ideas yet. So our first senior, late outstanding senior is Mackenzie Shiner.
As my senior year comes to an end, I'm obviously getting a little tense in my head. But I want to say thank you for giving me one more thing to look back on as a forward in life. I can honestly say that faculty at Lakeland has had celebration and I'm here today. Throughout my four years of high school, I've received an endless amount of support from teachers I've had in the past, present, and have every time in my life. Even like this, I've always been a baby self. I don't know. But I know the things I've learned and the people I've had and taught me. After graduation, I'll be attending some college to study communication arts and piano. I'd like to thank you for last time for giving me this far. I also think you just told us what was the wedding of the both of you.
And Mackenzie shows me a little girl, and I have to say she's one of the sweetest, kindest, first people I've ever met in my life. So congratulations to Mackenzie.
I didn't forget about our male student, but somehow pulled his note out of my folder. There it is. All right. Steven should be recognized because he continually challenges himself by taking rigorous classes, including taking AP exams for classes he has not received formalized instruction on. Steven is also an active member in the student council and serves on the District Nine Board and has a history of conducting workshops at the district and state student council conferences. He's also a member of the National Honor Society, and he is also a student athlete and is also a student representative on this board. So I'd like to recognize Steven Buzo. I want to say thank you for this honor, the opportunities I've gotten here at Lakeland have been extensive, and I wouldn't want to go to high school anywhere else. So thank you to everyone involved, the boards for allowing some of these classes to come here, our teachers for being there for us, instructing us, my parents, the girls in my shed. So, thank you for this honor. All right, Steven and Mackenzie, if I could have you meet me over there. We're going to get a nice photo.
Just join your students. It's a proud moment as teachers. Again, congratulations to our students. Very proud of both of you all. Okay, we're going to go on to informational items. So last Tuesday at the work session we had discussed doing some after-eight days and coming in two hours late on the second Monday of every month. Well, it quickly became apparent that that was not a very popular idea with our students or our parents. So, we're going to talk about this a little bit. I talked to Mr. Jeffrey about it and told him that we were getting on the plane, and he was okay with just saying we're going to forget about it this year. Mr. Jeffrey? Do you have an address or a chip pool? Does anybody else have anything to put? I know I spoke to somebody who can tell me a lot of people about it. Everybody good if we just amend the calendar to drop all those Mondays? So would be Monday, September 11th would be a full day. November 13th would now be a full day. December 11th, full day. January 8th, full day. February 12th, full day. March 12th, full day. April 9th, full day. The 14th, full day. Does anybody have anything, or do you want to do it?
Everybody in my stance at the work session. I was adamantly against it when it was first presented under that discussion, speaking with the residents of Scott Township, but I heard from people that this is not the right time to do something like this. That's my stance.
I just think it was a good idea in theory, but then when you start realizing you have so many parents, we do have so many working with parents. So we're going to go to the agenda, then it has this pre- amended calendar. Is that correct? That's amended. So that would be G. So we approved the 2017 AT district calendar as per closure five as amended. Okay, moving on. Everybody read that before we move on. Public comment on agenda items only. Anyone ready to comment on the agenda items? Rosa?
On the minutes, would it be possible that like just now when you had the informational items, to put more detail, to just put one word? If somebody wants to come in or read the minute books, there's not enough detail. I don't know why. It just seems like you're just don't put in enough detail. On the agenda items, the H, is there an increase from the president's contract, remember, again, Mr. Caputo?
Well, it's actually a decrease if possible.
Do you know how much?
Not exactly, Mrs. Nick, but I can tell you that it's 22,000 or 23,000 or 24,000 or $25,000, somewhere there currently.
And... J, enclosure with these positions. I don't see lacrosse on here.
We already hired lacrosse. There are playing those, playing now.
Yeah, I know, but I was just wondering if... So then this is not...
Okay, Mr. Jeffrey.
Yeah, Mrs. Nick, those are select specific. The positions that we need to get in place for next year for the fall so that things are in place for tryouts, summer stuff. It's really mostly all related items.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else? Board committee reports. We did the finance committee meeting. I am unfortunately unable, so Mr. Canzaro is going to give reports this evening.
Tuesday, April 11th, we had our second financial meeting. Preliminary budgets for general and special education.
Thank you very much. And if you don't have anything else, anything else, right? Student representative reports. Who would like to start?
So for the senior class, we recently won Spirit Week, which is really exciting. We just got back from our five-day class trip, and it was really successful. It was a lot of fun. So thank you to the school for allowing us to go, and we're starting to prepare for graduation and end of year.
Thank you. Steven?
So student council, we just ran a successful Spirit Week three weeks ago, and we have our seventh, eighth grade dance coming on at the high school on April 11th.
Thank you, Steven. Administrative reports, high school. Mr. Pivorado?
All right, it's a really, really busy time here at the high school, so I'm going to try to just give the highlights of what's going on because I actually have like three or four pages of things. But so there's a bunch of tables set up in the comments, and that's because tomorrow our environment on students, our science students will be hosting a Earth Day Fair. It's an exciting event that our students enjoy every year. Two of our CTC students were recently inducted into the National Technical Honor Society last week, so I would like to congratulate Josh Dipple, who is in the automotive technology program, and Zach Setzer, who's in the Fleming and Heating Program at CTC on that honor. Several of Mrs. Paconi's art students are participating in something called the Memory Project, which is a charitable organization where they draw portraits for young orphans in Syria and Ukraine. Some of our students, Christine Miller, Julia Charesco, and Celine Twardzik, participated in this program this year, and another student, Tammy Millen, is drawing a portrait for a child in Tanzania, so we're excited for those students. Prom is scheduled for May 13th, and that's going to be held in Viarelli's Dixon City. Our spring art show and music concert is tentatively scheduled for May 23rd, and it will be here in the auditorium and out in the comments. And let's see, recently two of our FBLA students, two, a senior and a junior, Molly Fossett and Thomas Hiller, placed fourth in the state in global app design, which allowed them, it actually allows them to travel to the National Leadership Conference if they choose to do that. So congratulations to them. It's an honor. Eighth grade student Stephanie Riss Miller took second place at the annual Keystone Computer Fair for her animations project. And finally, our school counseling department, along with the University of Scranton School Counseling Honor Society, is hosting the first annual College Siding Day. That's going to be next week, next Wednesday, and students will be recognized about where they are attending college. Parents have been invited to this event. They're going to come in, they're going to have breakfast, and then there's going to be a speaker, and then each student is going to be recognized in a unique way, you know, related to the college that they're attending. So that'll be here in the cafeteria in my conference next week. So we're excited for that event. Something new, something we've never done before. It's another great way to recognize our students.
Thank you, Mr. Pivorado. There's a lot going on in that. A lot of good stuff. Okay, midfield campus, we don't have reports this evening. Scott Campus, Mr. King?
It's great to get to follow James. He has four pages worth of stuff, right? That's wonderful.
Well, hey, good evening. Obviously, we're probably down testing. It'll be going on again starting next Monday for math, and pretty much keeping us on track for most of our activities in elementary school. I could tell you that my primary teachers are working on their classrooms for the design that we presented to you within our budget. Mary and I have met with them and they're kind of putting together their own ideas for some ownership. And if it passes, I think we're going to have something to be very proud of, and people are going to want to come and see Lakeland and say, wow, we got some good stuff going on.
I'm excited to see myself.
Thank you.
Thank you. Technology, Mr. Price?
Good evening. On this, we submitted our preliminary budget, and we're beginning to set up the schedule for all of the summer projects that we need to complete by the beginning of our school year. Also, the sun dark conversion is still on track. We had our first staff training today for about six hours. The high school principal and guidance counselor will walk through how to create classes, sub-student schedules, new student request, as well as pre-classes and a few other little big nice things, you know, beginning of next school year. Pretty much all we have really have accomplished. Thank you.
Special education.
Okay, I have some accolades I'd like to give. We have a lot of neat things going on in classrooms and special education. Mrs. Dwyer Mayfield, who is a fourth through sixth learning support teacher, her students became published authors last month. They learned to create mystery stories, and they teach their stories, and they published all the stories in a book called Mayfield Mysteries. So they're really excited about that. Mrs. Patty at Mayfield, who is the great three-year-three emotional support teacher for class, has begun a chicken lifecycle in it, and they're raising baby chicks to understand how they grow and develop. She said that's gone really well. Mrs. Margi Ali at Scott Campus challenged her students in the month of March with reading goals. They took her students to achieve their reading goals, so she celebrated that with them with a ice cream party. Mrs. Messina, who's the emotional support teacher in the high school, is taking her students to the Center for Independent Living in about a week. And on that field trip, they will be participating in a driving simulation and a cooking lesson. There's some cool things going on at Center for Independent Living, so a neat trip. Amy Petty, who is the emotional support teacher at Mayfield, also has been visited twice by administration from Forest City. In the most recent visit, the superintendent, the director of special education, and the director of curriculum and instruction visited her classroom because they would like to model her classroom at Forest City. So that was pretty cool. We have tentatively completed our budget for next year. I'm really excited about the fact that we're looking at adding the primary level life skills class and the high school transition program to our continuum of services here at Lakeland. And the other thing I wanted to share with you, I had talked before about the students we have who are graduating, who are planning to attend college. And I just kind of wanted to share out a little bit. We have eight students who are committed to higher education at this point. One going to Penn State Worthington, Johnson College, Keystone College, La Cerrana College School of Petroleum and Natural Gas, East Stroudsburg University, Bloomswood University, the Police Academy at La Cerrana College, and actually we have two going to the Police Academy. So I'm really excited about that. I think that that lends itself to the quality of instruction that we're providing, both in the general ed setting and special education. So that's just a wonderful number of students heading on to higher education. So very excited about that. That's fun. That's something to be proud of. Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Facilities, Mr. Orsak?
Good evening, everyone. I received quotes on the repairs to our fences at Mayfield, Scott, and at the high school. I'd like to start Mayfield first because that was a major one. It was brought up the last meeting. I met the owner of Outdoor Friends Solutions down at Mayfield. He is well versed in baseball fields. They did an open-to-high school, a bunch of the local high schools, they brought their fields up to code. I guess there's an ASA regulation on the height of a bat stop. Well, the height of the bat stop should be 24 feet. Currently at Mayfield, it's only 16 to where it can. So, you know, he feels that if we eliminate the bat stop disease system and put a new one that's 24 feet high, it's going to take off the angle that it is, but we're going to extend it 18 feet each way. That should prevent the foul balls from striking the gentleman's house that's the bridle path issue. And it would prevent any balls from going into the park and the lot on the home side. And also, it would need to replace this hole. It's also replacing the whole, I guess, Linden Street side fence where it's all damaged and wore from playing pepper on and all that. So it would, the bat stop size would be 60, it'd be 60 feet wide, 24 feet high. We replace 70 feet of six-inch chain link fence. And on the park on that side, we would replace 12 feet of chain link fence. That's, I have an proposal for that. And for Scott...
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was $9,600. Now, for Scott, for softball field, from the gates on the visitor's side, the heat foot section of fence, running all the way up to the bat stop, which is 40 feet, replacing all of that. In the middle, there's a three-inch post that's replacing that post, and then coming up the home side 20 feet from the bat stop, up to the baseline 20 feet, replacing all that fence. And once again, that's all curled. I tied it down at the baseball above. We tied the bat and everything, but it's at the point where there's really nothing more we can do to, you know, tink those curls out. I've tried bending it. I make exhausted all that. I know what to do. To make those repairs, it's $650.
So that's not the bat stop we were just talking about, the fence on the...
The fence lines.
Just a quote of them?
Correct. And Coach Wagner asked me if I could close off where the bat stops and the fence lines comes across because the dudels are cut out. So that's including closing that off. So the only access to the baseball field would be from where we bring the tractors in or the dudels.
That is only fence only. There's no hole included?
Only one ball. They only replace one ball.
So top rails and stuff like that aren't included?
Everything is, more or less, needs to be screened and replacing the one ball. That's why it's $650.
Chad? As far as vendors, how many people have looked at this?
Oh, I've had Rizol come and look at it. I got an astronomical price from them, and then I called Keystone Fence and asked them for a suggestion of someone that was...
I just want to make sure we competitive.
Oh, I have, I have. I love it. I love it. And these were by far the most economical, and the gentleman, you know, he was straightforward and, you know, wasn't... Everyone else wanted to repair Mayfield. And to repair, to re-screen Mayfield, doesn't make any sense because it's not solved with the answer. The answer is elevated and bringing up the hole and extended, where everyone else just wanted to quick go in there, fully screen it, and get out. And it was more money than the $9,600. And then with the high school, the other vendors that I had at the high school wanted to replace the post that was blown over. And these, this company feels that they could excavate around it, that there wasn't enough concrete board around it. They could excavate around the fence post, pull it back to the position, reconcrete it, and once again, we're going to close off those entrances from the bat stop down the baselines because now the dudels, the parents want all openings in the dudels for the children to access them. So that would also give them more support. And since Mr. Rosa Krantz, a few years back, got the proper windscreen for it, it's not an issue of it blowing around anymore. Where in the past, they were just using a blue tarot. So it was more or less a windsock, and that's what was causing those pipes to bend. So for the high school... They're going to, their proposal was to replace that top rail that the clips and everything are broken. They're going to replace that top rail. The close off the bat stop, the baselines, like where the bat stop comes up, there's little openings there. Close off those. Down the visitor's side, down the home side of the field, which would be 30 feet of eight-foot-high chain link fence. And down on the visitor's side, which is 160 feet of fence, they have to replace one three-inch post, and they're going to piece in on our home side, ten-foot section of fence after our doc. And reset the two bat stop posts. Not just, that's going to be the one on the end of the fence, and the one that's right next to it, they're going to reset those. And that total was $2,400, $2,225.
Chad, who are you guys going to take care of realigning the gates and fixing all the stuff that's damaged up there?
Yeah, I was, I started, I pinned all the bottom of the fence in the outfield like a new year's on. I touched all the fence pipes that popped off and everything today, and then I went to work on the gates and started doc for it. So I got out. I didn't have my way to do it.
All right, thank you. And will we put that in our...
That's it.
Okay, I have one question.
Oh, yeah.
Going over to the elementary yard, the podols are terrible. I know we're looking to pave that, get priced that. Is there any way we can...
No, I have, I have Scott Township today. I'm getting a tri-axle on five.
We're going to lose a child in a pot hole.
Or something, or anything.
Thank you, Chad. Okay, curriculum instruction, Mrs. Carroll?
We have lots of exciting things happening in curriculum. Teachers are wrapping up the formative assessment series we've been working on. We'll be doing a presentation at the IU on May 12th to showcase all the work that we've done. We're continuing our curriculum alignment efforts at both the elementary and the secondary level. Because of all the work done with the teachers, I'm excited to say we'll be ready for a presentation next year. Teachers have been pivoting some of the recommended changes, and the feedback's just been so positive. So I'm really excited, and based on what they've said, I think they are too in their student. Finally, we've been having a work closely with the building principals and teacher teams to look at scheduling for next year, and we're really looking at how can we use those instructional minutes effectively, and how can we maximize learning opportunity meetings for all students, finding ways to provide additional remediation or enrichment at the end.
Thank you, Mrs. Carroll. I'd like to just make a minute to thank all of our administrators and directors. I'm sure it makes you feel the same way. I enjoy listening to the reports. I'm glad we started doing that a while ago. It really reminds us of how many great things are going on, and I know you guys are a huge part of that. So thank you. Appreciate it. I know it's a busy time of year, so thank you for all you do. Legislative chair report, Mrs. Carroll?
Yes. Yesterday, the House Education Committee passed House Bill 67. House Bill, or, excuse me, 97. House Bill 97 is a charter school reform bill. This bill seems to be fast-tracked. They're going to try to get it through the legislature as quickly as possible. It's not a good bill. It makes baby steps in the right direction. It makes baby steps in the right direction, giant steps in the wrong direction. I urge you not to support it. All your representative or senators are telling, nice tribe, but no good. Needs more modification. It does not help us, and it doesn't help the taxpayers. Another bill that's kind of interesting is the Senate Education Committee has advanced legislation that will allow certain school employees to carry firearms on school property. This is Senate Bill 383. If this passes, you do not necessarily, schools do not necessarily have to participate. They can establish policies to do so if it passes. And that's all I want to talk about tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Yeah, any IU board, you can there?
Last meeting we followed, motions were made in the advisor organization, Shaw, Williams and Hillsom Training Corporation. We committed general fund balance, paving administration parking lot of $350,000. Replace food, children, students, administration area of $300,000. Need your help here, cost $500,000. And then, the late intervention, starting this March, made it 2016, 2017 school year, first reading of personal matters.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. CTC Board, just a turn.
Yes, the Joint Allied Committee of CTC, finally, got to meet on March 30th after several changes. Regular business session, of course. We were treated to a couple demonstrations from two of the programs involving some additional resources those programs required. The protective service program is now going to be including drones in the curriculum. The instructor is a licensed drone operator, and they will include that. These drones are professional style toys, rather expensive, but they've been paid for by a federal program called Perkins Program, so that's how they were covered. Graphics program also is now going to receive a new printing press, special printing press, from the Rotoflex Corporation. This produces specialized, high-speed labeling equipment. CTC is going to end up being the trainer for Rotoflex in the area. This is 75, or $78,000 preps that they're going to donate to the school, which I think's pretty good, and like that. And as we speak right now, the Skills USA program, we have 30 students down in Hershey competing in that event. They'll complete it on the 21st, and we'll see how those students do in that competition. Last time on Channel 16, you may have seen a presentation about one of our programs. That was Mr. Vanouk's Building Maintenance Program. They built a training wall for Scranton's canine unit. It involves training or retraining the dogs to sniff out drugs or accelerants in case of arson. Pretty good program, I'm glad to see that it demonstrates our wall with the community. The Co-op Bankhood is scheduled for April 27th. Senior Awards Night will be May 25th. Practical nursing graduation will be June 7th, and the next JOC meeting will be May 18th. There will be no April JOC meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carr. All right, no correspondence between you?
I don't have correspondence.
Okay, Mr. Kozak, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Wencesky, is there any update on the wall situation? Main Field?
They were, they were...
The two of the fire goal?
Yeah, they're, they're working on it. They were there yesterday making the adjustments. I didn't get a chance to run down there today to check on it. I was working up on the baseball.
Still optimistic?
Did it do well?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. I, they, they, sir, they said it could be repaired, it's gonna be all on that minute, do you know?
Could have been if you would've just cut the bottom off?
No, they, they were resetting, I put new track in, repairing, they said they could repair it.
All right. See if it works. Okay, thank, thank you.
Well, if it doesn't work, it's gonna be on there, because they said it was going to work.
Okay, well, hold them accountable. All right, thank you. Action on business before the board, please.
Madam President, I move we approve the due notice on business before the board.
Motion for by Mr. Yenochek, second by Mr. Strahan. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, please.
Madam President, I think a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting, March 2nd, 2017, as per closure number.
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Strahan, second by Mr. Yenochek. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, please.
Madam Chairman? I move that we approve the list of bills from March 23rd, 2017 to April 19th, 2017, for enclosure number two and number two K.
Second.
Motion for by Mr. Carr, second by Mr. Strahan. On the question, may I roll call, please?
Yes. Canzerro?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Potuck?
Yes.
Redspock?
Yes.
Tchura?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Yenochek?
Yes.
Motion carries, please. Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Canzerro, second by Mr. Evans. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, please.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion for the airballs to May 2017. Second.
Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Evans, second by Mr. Kozak. On the question, may I roll call, please?
Canzerro?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Potuck?
Yes.
Redspock?
Yes.
Tchura?
Yes.
Strahan?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Yenochek?
Yes.
Motion carries, please.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the field trip request from the Scholastic Team. One teacher to five students to attend the SSNCT Scholastic Nationals, Chicago, Illinois, from 4/27 to 4/30, 2017, as for enclosure number four.
Motion for by Mr. Kozak, second by Mr. Evans. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, please.
Madam President, I move we approve 2017, 2018, Mr. Calhoun has been court asked for employment for bike, has amended.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Yenochek, second by Mr. Strahan. On the question, may I roll call, please?
Yes. Canzerro?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Potuck?
Yes.
Redspock?
Yes.
Tchura?
Yes.
Strahan?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Yenochek?
Yes.
Motion carries, please.
Madam President, I make a motion to accept bid on waste management for waste removal and recycling for 2017, 2018 school year, as for enclosure six.
Second.
Second by Mr. Canzerro.
Okay, motion for by Mr. Strahan, second by Mr. Canzerro. On the question, may I roll call, please?
Yes. Canzerro?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Potuck?
Yes.
Redspock?
Yes.
Tchura?
Yes.
Strahan?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Yenochek?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve $15,000 for the 2017, 2018 Teacher Innovation Grant Program.
Motion for by Mr. Carr, second by Mr. Strahan. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, please.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the select coaches, advisor, appointments for 2017, 2018 school year, fully compensation for 2013, 2014, and 2015, for our student period, including the creation of all the necessary paperwork, enclosure set.
Second.
Motion for by Mr. Canzerro, second by Mr. Evans. On the question, may I roll call, please?
Yes. Canzerro?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Potuck?
Yes.
Redspock?
Yes.
Tchura?
Yes.
Strahan?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Yenochek?
Yes.
Motion carries, please. Okay.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the 2017, 2018 grade 9 to 12 course guide for enclosure number eight.
Second.
Motion on the floor, by Mr. Evans, second by Mr. Canzerro. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, please.
Madam Chairman, I move we accept the letter of intent to retire from Linda Sutler, teacher active at the end of 2016, 2017 school year, for enclosure number nine.
Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Kozak, second by Mr. Evans. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now we're up to public comment. Just want to be the podium just being as where you're comfortable.
My partners in crime are not coming in.
They're ditching you?
Yeah, they're leaving. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we're fine, thank you.
So, I'm here on behalf...
There's yours.
Oh, I'm here. On behalf of the PTA and Scott Elementary, to propose a swing play yard area near the kindergarten playground. So, a rather large one, actually. We have pictures that, you know, pass around. It's, some of our fundraising efforts have already kicked off, so we're hoping to get your approval to look at the swing yard or play yard. Right now, we received a donation from Walcheck to give the play yard chips to come down with it, right, so they'll, you know, that would be saved. We raised $15,000 to put towards the play yard. However, some of the biggest challenges are installing it. Right now, we're, we're finding that many of the companies are going to charge almost $10,000 to install the play yard. That's quite expensive.
Sammy?
I agree. We'll get it done.
Yeah, I'll work with you guys. We'll, we'll make it happen.
Thank you.
You raise the money, we'll make it happen.
Okay.
Did it once before, we'll do it again.
Okay. All right. That's great. I'm sure we can get a lot of them. I'll have it delivered tomorrow.
Sammy will be here at eight.
We need a lot of them. So, that's, are there any other concerns that we should be aware of before we move forward with the process?
No.
Who were you getting it from, if I might ask?
Well, we did get some quotes. One was from ATC Play. They were all like online. Do you know anybody local?
Miracle.
Oh, okay.
Miracle, and actually, I can give you that number. There are local, a lot of Ticanic, that's who I got the playground for, and Scott, the baseball field, and the one behind the Civic Center. They came from Miracle Network, and they are, they're very good to work with nonprofits.
Okay.
So, might be worth, you know, shop, just at least give them a call.
And it's Miracle Network?
Yeah.
Okay, why?
Miracle Playground, and they go under something else for ground, I can give you that information.
Apparently, Ticanic area, one in like, a couple of years ago, and I guess there's, it was purchased local, they spent $40,000 to...
Yeah, so one that's up at the, up at the tech park, up by the playground, or the baseball fields, that was a little over $80,000. But when we actually raised the money for that, that was a $160,000 playground, and that's how much they worked for us to make it happen. So, it is what he said, though, the big thing is the labor, they're very intense to put together, but, like I said, we can make that happen. Anyway, Chris, she'll give you all the specific specs in like the next building grounds, so that you can have it right in front of you, so you're exactly what you're looking at.
Yeah, you can make it to the work session and...
Yeah. That'll be good.
I'd like to say, PTA, you guys are amazing, how much money you raise and what you donate. I hope the kids are really young.
I told you, you've got one more year.
No, I told you, it's only a year. I think it's high school.
I think it's great. You guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, thank you all.
A big community effort, I would have, yeah, have to say. We have a lot of great parents that help.
Yeah, that's nice. You can put the money towards really good things, so we appreciate that, we really do. That's, that's a big purchase, so thank you.
Thank you.
Continue, it's good work.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Stol.
Hi. Good. My name's Christopher, I just have a question about the freshman basketball program. We're moving forward, where, where does that stand?
Well, right now, as I've spoken with you people, we, we don't have the numbers for the freshman basketball program right now. I, I think if, as a freshman on the team, was on the freshman basketball team, we would not have a JV team. We did have one a couple of years, I think we got rid of it three years ago because we didn't have the numbers. We had two freshman players. If the numbers come back, we'd certainly be willing to go back to having a team. We did have a freshman football team about two years ago. We don't have enough kids. Who remembers that? Mr. Kevora, was it two years ago?
We've had one the last two years.
The last, it was three years ago. So, when the numbers aren't there, you don't, you know, we can't have a team on the numbers. So, you know, same with football, we didn't have the numbers, we didn't have the team. We have the numbers, we have the team. Same with basketball and every other sport, so it's not that we're not coming to pay for it, but you need people to play.
I understand. I was actually coaching, but last year, the freshman team was available, it was seven players, I agree. However, we have a youth league, 260 players, and we're graduating 36 sixth graders this year and seventh grade, that play basketball for the last four years. It's not feasible for next season. I believe the players are there, I'm not gonna get into that, because the league's been around for four years, and we have kids that have come consistent now, and have been playing for a while. So, if not for the next season, I, I feel that it really needs to be looked at for the following season, the 18, 19 season. I know for certain the kids are gonna be there. I also think it's a very important year because we lose some of those kids that go to the JV teams as freshmen, and we lose those freshmen that just walk away from basketball, never see them again.
One good thing is, you know, they get a lot of playtime, because we don't have enough left players. How many eighth graders played this year? I mean, I don't know off the top of my head. Anybody?
They had two full teams, seventh and eighth grade had two full teams.
Eighth grade had a full team, so if they outplay next year, you know, something will be...
But the other, the other thing with that is you can move kids up, so if you have numbers at seventh grade, you can continue to bump the better players up into the program, which will fill the whole program. So, if it's not feasible for next season, that's fine, but we can look at it for 18, 19, and now that, you know, the rider hopefully is gonna be fixed, which will make another full court available to, to all the basketball programs, not just, you know, the high school, the youth kids use the gyms. So, moving forward, that can, that can happen, we would greatly appreciate that opportunity to have that freshman team back.
Yeah, absolutely, if the numbers are there, you know, but obviously, that's something you can consider, but if there's no players. The only thing too, I'd like to mention, when we did have the last freshman team, we did have eighth graders and seventh graders playing on it, and we got tons of complaints from the freshman parents who were on there because their kids weren't getting playtime over the eighth graders. So, it's a delicate balance to adhere to that, but if we have enough ninth graders, I'm sure the board would be willing to consider bringing that team back, but right now...
I mean, back then, we didn't have the program we have now.
Right.
The youth level, so, um, there's a reason that program was started. And again, it went from a hundred and twenty-five kids the first year to two hundred and sixty players last season.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And the adjustment being made for next year, we may end up, end up having more kids. So we're gonna try to absorb some of those seventh graders. I might make the junior high team back into the program and keep them playing with the hopes that maybe they'll be a little better. So, um, I appreciate it.
Yeah, feeder programs are very important for sports. So thank you, Chris. I appreciate it. Anyone else?
Who else? I was very disappointed in fact in January, when we had all the money been spent in terms of places, that, uh, the second graders had to do fundraisers to buy art supplies and each move more effort into the education.